Good evening. I'd like to call the Common Council meeting of August 3rd to order with a pledge allegiance, if you could stand.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk Kramer, could we please have roll call?
Alderman Ted Grotty.
Here.
Alderman Repella.
Here.
Alderman Nichols.
Here.
Alderman Taylor.
Here.
Alderman Sevigny.
Here.
Alderman Langdon.
Here.
Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Alderman Tom Grotty.
Here.
Okay. First item on the agenda is a public hearing. This is for the proposed amendment to Title II, Chapter IV, Section 2-4-1 of the Manassia Code of Ordinances pertaining to vacant buildings registration. Is there anyone here this evening that would like to speak on this topic? If so, please come up to the podium, state your name and address for the clerk.
I'm Paul Burnett.
Yep, oops, sorry here. You have to hit your button. There we go. There you go. All right. I'm Paul Burnett and this is Nicholas Jevony and we're the owners at 210 Main Street. Over the past couple of months, we have come to a few City of Manassia meetings to bring our concerns to you regarding an adjacent building to ours on Main Street. We shared the struggles we've had over the past several years in communicating with our neighbor, the importance of maintaining their building, so it was not negatively impacting ours or the community. We have spent thousands of dollars on repairs and subsequent means of preventing further deterioration of our own property because of their neglect. We have talked with several business partners and friends within this corridor and have found that we are not alone in our struggles. We hope they have reached out to you as well. We are pleased that the Landmarks Commission has penned and this council is reviewing the proposed amendment to ordinance O-08-20, the vacant building registration. Our hope is this amendment will pass and help those property owners who are currently not caring for their properties and their city to see that it is their responsibility when purchasing properties within these districts to maintain and preserve them not just for themselves but for the longevity of the city and also its history. We have fought the good fight and leave it in your capable hands to do the right thing and help we business and property owners within your and our city to now care for us and our passion to continue serving this community in the best way we know how by providing well-maintained properties which draw more businesses, shoppers, diners, walkers, and sightseers to this amazing and quaint downtown which should continue to have a truly wonderful future. We have further continued to believe in the grand potential and viability of a vibrant Manassia historic district and surrounding neighborhoods. This is why we have come to you, to applaud your efforts in aiding in the endeavor of preserving Manassia's history while creating an energized and profitable future for our community. Thank you all in advance for passing this much-needed addition to the City of Manassia's ordinances. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Nick and Paul. By the way, I just want the rest of the council and the gallery and staff to realize today I'm running the meeting, the mayor is not feeling well, so let's all wish him well. Anyone else from the gallery like to speak on the proposed ordinance?
Hope you don't mind. I come prepared. With everyone's permission, if I could please pass this around to all the board members so they can get a closer visual of... The building that I'm showing here is major... The visual that I'm showing...
Bill, by any chance, did you state your name?
My name is Bill Banty. I'm the owner of Lemon Loves Lime at 192 Main Street, Manassia. I wanted to come to this meeting because I also wanted to support this amendment but also mention something that I feel needs to be further addressed because the current amendment is addressing vacant buildings. My concern is that there are other buildings that are occupied that are facing the same concerns. As you can see in the visual here, this is a neighboring building to us. We are a single-story building and I think that, you know, Wild Apple is a single-story building and we're both facing serious issues with exterior walls, brick facades that are significantly deteriorating and causing damage to our buildings. The pictures, the visuals that I showed you here, as you can see, there's only a piece of tar paper here holding those bricks in place. And I continually throughout the year, for the past two and a half, three years, go on my roof and pick up bricks that have fallen. I've had to patch up my roof several times. I've had three or four patches done since we've owned the building. And my concern is that, I understand, you know, we had a front and rear facade grant available in the past, but that grant, I don't know if the funds have run out for that, but that grant only supported the front and rear of the facade. This is not part of that and that grant would have never addressed this because this is a side-facing facade of the building. And, you know, people have asked me, have you approached the business owner? And I have, I have. I've made my best efforts with communicating the issues to them, trying to get the repairs needed completed, but I don't see a sense of urgency that this will ever be done because it's really not affecting his building, it's affecting my building. And some pictures that I didn't bring were, you know, showing the windows too. Chunks of the wood frame rotting out, falling on my roof, you know, nails. I've had an ongoing series of issues happening and I think that, I'm bringing this to the Common Council's attention because we really need to think about business owners that have invested in Manassia, come to Manassia. We brought our whole entire business from Illinois to Wisconsin because we believed in Manassia. And I'm just looking for support to be able to continue to run our business in a manner where it's not going to be costing me thousands of dollars to provide repairs on a neighboring building because I can't influence them, encourage them to maintain their billing the way it needs to be maintained. So I'm bringing this to everybody's attention because I'm hoping to get support where there's further consideration, where you might look at some thing that can be done to perhaps create a grant again that addresses side facades, not just strictly front and rear facades, or there can be some, something similar to the current amendment, the ordinance in place that addresses occupied buildings as well. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Anyone else like to speak on this? Anyone else? This is on the facade. Alrighty. With that, then we'll continue. The next area is report of department heads and officers. Nancy McKinnon, you have an update for us this evening? Where did she disappear to? Well, I think we'll just keep going and then we can always come back to that. Is she out there?
She would be in her charge.
Alright, with that, then we'll just move on and then we'll come back to that. So at this time, I'll entertain a motion to receive minutes A through F and communications G through K. Alderman Grotty.
Thank you, Alderman Sevigny. At this time, like to make a motion for, receive the minutes to receive A through F and the communications G through K.
Motion's been made and seconded. Alderman Taylor, do you have something?
Yes, and it was for Director McKinney.
Oh.
And the park director. I don't see her either.
Megan, she's out. She's not here today.
Apparently Megan is not here today, so maybe if you could call her tomorrow?
Okay, and then the other one...
And then Nancy will be coming back in a bit here.
Yeah.
Okay, so motion's been made.
I'm right here.
Okay. Nancy, before you give your presentation, Alderman Taylor has a question for you.
It was in regards to your message about the senior center operation. Is the building going to be shut down as far as electricity or the air conditioning being turned off to save tax dollars? How is the building going to be mothballed?
I'm not sure I understood.
I see that we're going to close the senior center, is that correct?
So basically what we were looking at is because we have to have the senior center open for elections, that we would keep it at a minimal temperature and we would monitor that and then after that we would, you know, determine what to do, but we would have to keep it at a minimal temperature and keep operations open so that, you know, we could keep the building heated.
Well, of course, when we get into the fall of the year or something, but this time of year, we could just shut all the mechanics down on it. We wouldn't need to air-condition it or maintain a certain level to save, you know, tax dollars.
Right.
And right now, it's open because there is open voting right now?
I understand that.
Okay, alright. I just want to make sure.
Yeah. So we've been looking at all that and actually Megan Sackett did do an analysis of what it would save per month. It's minimal, but it's still, you know, money that would be saved, so, you know, we're looking at all of that.
I'm just worried about spending money for the next two, three months that we don't need to spend after the election to keep that building cooled or heated at this time that we don't need to. Thank you.
Yep.
Alright.
Can you just grab that?
Alderman Repella.
Thank you, standing Mayor Sevigny. This is for Haley as far as the absentee voting. Haley, how many people have we had vote in these two days, actually three days, Wednesday, Friday, and Monday?
I don't have an exact count at this time, but I would say it's around 30 people.
Okay. And you do go over all the ballots Haley and make sure everything is done correctly or whatever after they've been turned in?
That is correct. We check over the certificate envelopes to ensure they have been properly signed by the voter as well as witnessed, signed and witnessed with an address on the envelope.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Director McKinney, about the senior center, your memo indicated that essential health services will be provided at the health department. Could you let everyone know more about what that means?
Sure. We have two grants from Winnebago County. One of the grants covers the operations of the senior center, the director, and the other one covers health screening 60-plus, that's the name of it. And we have a public health nurse that's dedicated just to the senior center. She's there 12 hours a week and she arranges for screenings such as oral health, vascular screening, labs. One of the essential services that we arrange for is having the Valley VNA do foot care. Megan herself provides blood pressure checks and coordinates with Jeff Cushman from Home Term Pharmacy, who is a pharmacist, and they actually work with seniors on looking at their health status and their medications. So there's a number of things that we feel can be shifted over to the health department for service delivery. We have a pretty nice complex here that would work as far as not having to have the senior center open to do those services.
Should people call for an appointment or do you offer them on some sort of schedule?
When we, Megan Polly is the nurse's name, sets up an actual schedule and then we get the word out through the senior center website and other means and they call the health department for those services and they are in advance and we take it by appointment. So we will be notifying people in the near future when Megan has that worked out. The Winnebago County Aging and Disability Resource Center holds those grants and they have been extremely flexible, especially recognizing that Megan herself has done COVID-19 work for us almost exclusively since March. So when we make the transition now to getting contact tracers and opening that a little bit more, then she'll be revising the schedule for screenings and service delivery.
Okay.
And we'll probably start with the most critical essential services first. For example, foot care is a real essential service. We also have, you know, blood pressure checks that people are relying on, so there's a number of things that we have to, you know, think about before we put a schedule out or invite people to come in for appointments and we want to make sure we don't have to reschedule or postpone, so we're kind of taking this slow.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Alderman Repella.
Thank you very much, standing Mayor Sevigny. Just a question about...
It's just council president.
Oh, council president. Me or wannabe, okay. Manassia library operations, I don't think, I don't see Ms. Vicki here. She's not here, so I was just curious, explaining about the drive-up service, but I don't think we have anybody to explain that, so, alright, thank you.
Alright, motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those minutes and communications have passed. Next item is public comments on any matter of concern to the city. If you'd like to come up to the mic, anyone? And please state your name and address for the clerk.
Arnie Collier, 941 Tackle Street, Manassia, Wisconsin, member of the Landmarks Commission and also the Housing Authority. First, I want to thank you for letting me speak tonight. As you know, there are three outstanding programs in the city of Manassia to restore or fix your house. The programs have been in effect for a few years and the first program was the Paint and Restore and there was language in there that no alderman would be eligible for the program. Why? I'm figuring back then we looked at the state statute and said that would be a violation. Since then, that has been removed. I'm ask, I've talked to many people and many people have got a hold of me. I'm asking the city attorney to draft a letter, to Josh Cole, Attorney General, and state the facts on what happened from the beginning to what's happened now and get a final answer on this so the housing committee can go forward and do their job. At the last meeting, I asked some questions and I didn't, I couldn't answer them the way I thought they should have been and the people couldn't answer them, so we're sitting on a few properties. I'm hoping that we could get a letter out, get an answer to this question, and go forward. I'm asking for Pam to draft a letter, send it to the Attorney General, and get back to the housing committee so we can do our job. Please take this in consideration when you vote and I hope you pass this so we can get some information final on this dilemma. Thank you.
Thank you, Arnie. Is there anyone else from the gallery that'd like to speak? Anyone else? Seeing none, I will close that off and we will move to the consent agenda items. Alderman Ted Grotty.
Thank you, Council President. At this time, I'd like to make the motion to approve the minutes from the Common Council of 7/20/20.
Okay, first thing was, this is the consent agenda, so if, are there any items that we'd like to be held?
Yes, number two.
Okay. Anything else from the council? Alderman Nichols.
I actually wanted to remove number one, but if we have a motion on the floor, that's in order...
No, there's, I didn't recognize the motion and there wasn't a second, so at this point, if you want to hold that, I'll entertain that.
Number one. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so with that, is there a motion for the MOU leaf collection study? Alderman Grotty.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to make the motion then for number three, the MOU leaf collection study.
Motion's been made by Alderman Grotty, second by Alderman Taylor. Is there any further discussion on that? Seeing none, will, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. First item then is the Common Council minutes of 7/20/20. Alderman Grotty.
At this time then, I'd like to make the motion to approve the Common Council minutes from 7/20/20.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded by Alderman Schmidt. It was a tie, but...
We're quick there, Al.
Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. I have a correction to offer this evening and I did run my correction by both Clerk Kramer and Attorney Captain. The correction is on page six, near the bottom, under action item three, which was the R-2820.
Okay.
And I guess I'll call it a paragraph, the second paragraph from the bottom. The correction is that Mayor Murkis left the meeting at 9:25.
Right.
And Council President Stan Sevigny presided for the remainder of the meeting and that that would be placed after Alderman Langdon's motion to table.
I don't see a problem with that. I think we're all in agreement, I'll second and we can take a vote on that. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes. Thank you, Alderman Nichols. I saw that also, but I didn't think, you know, I thought I'd let it go. So thank you for that correction. Alright, then we have payment to Myron Construction. Alderman Langdon.
Thank you. I'll make the motion to make payment to Myron Construction Company contract number 2020-06 for the Public Works Facility project in the amount of $1,451,609.86, payment number four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Taylor. Any further discussion?
Motion carries eight zero.
Alright. Thank you, clerk. Moving on then to action items. Action item one, accounts payable and payroll. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Move to approve the accounts payable and payroll for the term of July 23rd through July 30th, 2020, in the amount of $1,156,368.88.
Motion's been made and seconded by Alderman Taylor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Motion carried on, roll call eight zero.
Next item would be the beverage operators license application for the 2019 through 2021 licensing period. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. Move to approve the beverage operators license applications for the 2019 through 2021 licensing period as listed under approved in the clerk's memo dated August 3rd, 2020.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Taylor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call.
Motion carried eight zero.
Thank you. With that, we'll move on to item four, acceptance of the Jefferson Park entrance gate. That's alright, I'm moving the way I want. Because I read it, that's the way it's going to go. So that's probably, that'd probably be... Ted? Okay.
Thank you. At this time, motion to approve the appearance, acceptance of the Jefferson Park entrance gate.
Second by Alderman Taylor. Would have been nice to have some slideshow of that so the public could see, but this is a gift from Myron Construction. I know Alderman, Tom Grotty and I have been discussing this for a little bit and we really don't have decent entrances to some of our parks and that's how this came about and the mayor's followed through along with community development, I believe. No? Boy, he didn't even want to take credit. Alright, any further discussion? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. I'm not sure who to direct my comments to, so I'll hope it's noted with our representative on the park board and as well as Public Works. It is my understanding, and I could be wrong, that the planting beds at the corner of Broad Street and ICE are important to the neighborhood. Members of the community have invested a lot of time there and so I'm hoping that as this moves forward that that will be minimally disturbed. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Nichols. That'll be noted in the minutes. Alderman Tom Grotty.
I just, thank you, Stan. In the, this is, might be a little petty or whatever, but the design gate feature is intended to reflect Jefferson School. I'd really like it to replicate the stonework.
I was hoping that was the case.
Because the stonework in these drawings do not replicate the feel of the school itself, so I would really...
I would ask that that...
I know it's a gift, but I don't want to get too pushy.
And I don't think that would be much of an issue and I'm glad that you brought that point out and I think it should be reflected in the minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call. Good points.
Motion carried eight zero.
Alright, thank you. Okay, now we'll move back to item three, the Class B and Class B... The Class B and Class B beer and liquor license for tonic. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Move for the approval of the Class B beer and liquor license for Tonic Tavern LLC on Manitowoc Road for the 2021 through 20, for the 2020 through 2021 licensing year.
Motion's been made and seconded by Alderman Taylor. And maybe it's because he's standing close to me, I get to hear him first. And he's, he did go, so. Anything further? Seeing none, let's take a roll call?
Motion carried eight zero.
Thank you. There is no held over business. The next item on the agenda then is 0820, an ordinance amending Title II, the Government and Administration, Chapter Four, and I'll let...
And then we do have that item five.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, that's how I go with what I want, what I think is priority. But we'll take the ordinance, seeing I read it, and that would be Alderman Tom Grotty? Right? Or, or it's... Yeah, yeah, we'll just finish it.
I'll bow.
Thank you, Tom.
Thank you, Stan. I'd like to bring forward ordinance 00820, an ordinance amending Title II, Government Administration Vacant Building Registration. Joe's here tonight, who works very closely with the Landmarks Commission, so I would like any interjection, or, we've worked quite a while on this ordinance, so.
Okay, motion been seconded then? Okay, Joe? Yeah, I think I'll just kind of give a brief update of what this ordinance kind of all entails. So this, like Tom said, did come out of Landmarks Commission, and it's kind of getting at issues like what a few of the public talked about today. There are buildings in our kind of core downtown that are vacant, and when a building is vacant, it's typically not held up to the same standard as an occupied building, so this ordinance is really trying to get at that. So anything within the C2, that Central Business District, would apply under this section. They would be required to register with us after 30 days if they, the building became vacant, if any units, commercial units within that building became vacant. And the idea is that we're hoping they would fill those buildings, but if they did not fill those spaces after a period of six months, we would charge them a fee of $250 for registering the building, and then our, a person would be assigned to inspect that building, and they could inspect the inside and outside to make sure that it's still being held up to a standard that these occupied buildings have. In addition, if they were to fail any of those inspections, that inspection fee would go up to $500. Once they fix whatever issue it is, health code or building code or later, it would go back down to that 250. If anybody missed an inspection, we would typically schedule these ahead of time. If they're just not showing up, not answering the door, we would be able to find them that $50 per time we tried to show up and didn't gain entry to the building. And then at the bottom right here, we are, Landmarks thought that it was a, since this money is kind of being generated from the historic and C2 district, that the money that is being charged for these registration fees would then funnel back into our grant program that we have right now, so that, Bill Bonzi kind of touched a little bit on that. We do allow buildings in our downtown to apply for facade improvements, so we're hoping that this money can help to keep that fund a little bit afloat. I don't know if there's any other questions that anyone has here, or...
Think Alderman Taylor has one? Alderman Taylor?
Thank you. At the Landmarks Commission, were the owners of these vacant buildings notified?
Were they notified that this ordinance is coming through?
Of the Landmarks meeting, the agenda, and that they were going to be discussing their buildings?
No, not specifically the, the buildings that are vacant. They obviously get all the, we did do a notification during Landmarks, a Class II notification, and we didn't have to, so we have tried to make this pretty public, but we haven't mailed anything to people.
So for tonight's meeting, were the vacant building owners notified?
No.
Is there a reason why they, as a courtesy to those businesses, why they weren't?
I, I guess, I, we, I, I just didn't think about it. I guess that's my excuse, but I mean, it is in the paper. It is, it's been in the paper twice now, so I guess in a perfect world, we could have sent them a letter.
Those little notices are tough to read sometimes. I mean, why wouldn't, as a, as a community, as a city government, why wouldn't we notify them? Because this directly, you know, affects them.
Yeah, I'm not disagreeing with you. I'm saying we, we missed it, so.
Would it be in the best interest in, to have, and a courtesy to those businesses? A lot of them have been here for many years to hold us and to notify them before next meeting?
Okay, the, the community development works off of the ordinances that we have and the ordinance, and that's how we move forward, but if it is the direction of the Common Council that, again, these should be notified, we can either update those ordinances to do that in the future, otherwise, again, we could certainly, you know, notify them, potentially table this, or however we would like to work that, to make sure they are notified. But again, we did do a Class II notification before the Landmarks, as well as the Common Council meeting.
I certainly support this ordinance. I think it's, it's well-written, it's probably overdue, and, but I still think it's a courtesy to these people, these families that have owned these businesses, to be notified that we're discussing this tonight, talking about them. And I'll see what the rest of the council has to say.
Well, I, I totally agree with Alderman Taylor on that. I, if, if we've had especially two buildings that were talked about tonight, and I know that we're aware of it, I think at least, you know, they should have been contacted. But we did have a public hearing tonight. You did have the class, what'd you say? A Class II notice that was placed. The procedures were, were followed, but as a courtesy, I agree with Alderman Taylor. I think basically everyone in the Central Business District should have been contacted. So, anything further? Alderman Grotty?
Thank you. I, I kind of agree with that, but they kind of neglect their buildings. They don't show up. They, they're not around. They don't have any common courtesy for the other buildings next to these other individuals. Understand that they should be notified. There was something put out. It just tells me the lack of concern or a lack of no concern for, for their, for their properties, and we got to get tough with them and put down some regulations and get this ordinance going. So Alderman Taylor's completely correct, but I think they, they lack some responsibility too with how they treat their buildings.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I'm not sure which way the council is leaning at this point. If it is the prerogative to hold this and inform property owners, then I feel strongly every single property owner in the district should be notified. And my other question or concern about the ordinance is the fee of $50 shall be imposed for each time the inspector is unable to gain access to the structure, and I think that fee should be higher.
I thought you were gonna take it off. Okay. Alderman Tom Grotty?
Thank you, Stan. This is not going after businesses. This is going after delinquents. And the issue with some of these people, they don't even respond to the people whose buildings they're destroying. So if you think they're going to show up here, I have a pretty strong feeling it's not going to work. I understand the concern, but we're not after viable businesses. Some of these buildings have been empty for 10 years. 10 years. They've applied to Landmarks, got money to do restoration, and stopped with the restoration. They never even finished their jobs. So what are you trying to tell us about these landlords that are delinquent within our city? It wrecks the whole vibrancy of the downtown. This downtown needs work. We've been snowballed a few times. One, and I may be going off tangent a bit, but the Quokely Warehouse, which is supposed to be all landscaped and a bike trail, where did that go? Now we have 140 Main that is going to become vacant. Everybody song and dance to the guy from New York, and that's gone now. So when does this stop? And it has to stop tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. Anything further? Alderman Taylor?
I agree 100% with you, Alderman Grotty, with Alderman Nichols, and Alderman Ted Grotty. But it might be 10 years, but two weeks won't hurt to make sure these people are at least notified, that we just don't cut the legs out. Nobody likes to get, you know, their legs cut off from underneath them, and, and then he'll read about it in the newspaper or something, so I just feel it's just a courtesy for this body, and maybe that'll be the wake, the call to awaken a little bit, but let them come here, have their say, and let's hear what they have to say, and let's just act like an open government, and I'm for this ordinance. 100%, I'll vote for it, but sometimes I think people need to be able to come to their government, show that we're an open government, and have their say at the podium before, and we can vote in front of them too, if they want to come. Maybe they don't want to come, but I just think that it's, it's just good government, and I don't think two weeks would hurt us to, two weeks longer on this, so. I would like to make a motion to postpone until... Clerk, when is our next meeting?
Seventeenth.
Postpone to the 17th of August, and inform the vacant build, or inform the C1 and C2 district of these changes coming, so everybody's aware of it, if they're going to close their building. And we just heard that 140 Main isn't going to happen, so we need to inform them too of this new change in this ordinance, so. I just think it's good in open government. That's the only reason I'm asking for it. And that was the motion.
Okay. Is there a second to postpone until August 17?
Inform.
And inform the people that are affected in the Central Business District. There's, no? That motion fails. Is there any other motions, amendments? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. I have a question before I have a motion. Do we have an idea of what it costs to send the inspector to the buildings?
If we'd be looking at a, an hourly rate, I'd have to go back and look back at the, the contract, but I believe it is $85, $90 an hour, and we would probably be charged a minimum hour if it was an inspection such as this.
Okay.
And I don't believe we're allowed to charge more just to make more revenue. It has to be based on the actual cost, so.
Well, I still feel that $50 is not enough to...
Well, he used the $80 number. I think that would probably...
Well, I was going to double that, 50s.
He's looking up something right now, I believe. I just don't want us to overdo our due diligence here that, you know, that we comply with our... So services outside of permits, where permits aren't generated, so, such as liquor inspections, things of that nature, the charge is $85 per hour. If you'd want to make a motion for that, I'd be open to that.
Then I will move to amend, to change this fee of $50 to $85 for each time the inspector is unable to gain access.
Is there a second? Second by Alderman Langdon, and four others, so. Anything on the amendment about the 85? Seeing none, do you, are you set up for us to take a roll call on that? All righty.
And who was the second?
Alderman Langdon. All set? Yep. Oh, 85. Yeah. Trying to save five bucks. This is just on the amendment.
Motion carries eight zero.
Okay. Now we have the amended motion. Any discussion on the amended motion? Alderman Nichols?
Thank you. Because the question was raised in the public hearing this evening, this ordinance deals with unoccupied buildings. Are there options for occupied buildings that could be explored?
We could certainly continue to look into that. We always do have an enforcement hand of such buildings. The issue lies really with a funding source to support that. Not to say that, that the city should always be giving out handouts, but, but these buildings, these historic buildings are very, very expensive to maintain, as I'm sure the gentle, all the gentlemen in this building can attest to, because I'm sure they've put in plenty of funds in their own building. But really, to, to use that enforcement hand without a funding mechanism to assist in that, I, I greatly fear that, that we would not have very good compliance, and if we would, to follow that, that path of enforcement to the state statute, we may end up going against the, the thought process that we want here and potentially even having to cause some of these buildings to be torn down, and, and again, greatly impacting the historic environment and climate of our downtown. So again, finding ways to, to use enforcement, but to support, to support that investment and to move on, I think is, is the key, and I think we've, we've heard it for years, and I think we'll continue to look at, at creative ways where we could, you know, potentially use, you know, funds to support that, or to recreate a facade grant, to resupply funds to that grant, and maybe open it up for the entire exterior of the building versus just the front and rear.
I will note that one of the items Landmarks wants to discuss is having the current facade grant not just count towards the front face, but be potential for the whole sides, or for all the sides, so that's something we still have to discuss to that, discuss at that commission.
Okay, thank you both.
Anything further? We'll take a roll call on the amended motion, or the amended ordinance? We'll take a roll call on the amended motion or the amended ordinance.
Motion carried eight zero.
All righty, thank you. Okay, we are going to now jump way back to the beginning with Nancy, because Nancy is back and she's been patiently waiting. And she will be giving us an update on the COVID-19 situation. It will not be like last time. It's just a synopsis of where we are today. Nancy?
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much. Just going to make sure I can click forward on this. Yep. I'd just like to give you a cumulative snapshot of today's numbers. State of Wisconsin, there are 911,435 negative test results, 55,328 positive. 4,732 people have been hospitalized. There have been 949 deaths. There are 9,866 active cases. And 38,633 recovered cases. In the city of Manassas, we have 2,232 people who have tested negative for COVID-19, 119 tested positive. We've had four people that have been hospitalized. We have had no deaths. We have 21 active cases at this time, which comprises about 17.6% of our active cases. 98 have recovered. And that tracks along the state lines, as you can see. And while it may look like 21 active cases is not a lot, it does mean that there are 43 contact investigations currently underway. So people who have had close contact with those active cases. Calumet County, you can see they have 5,634 negative test results, 258 positives, two deaths. Outagamy County, 24,206 negative test results, 1,113 positive and 13 deaths. And Winnebago County, 25,419 negative test results, 1,063 positive and 18 deaths. And just keep in mind that Calumet and Winnebago County do comprise... Those that you're seeing do comprise the city of Manassas residents. About nine, eight or nine percent are from Calumet County, and the remainder are from Winnebago County in the city of Manassas. Just want to give you something new, updated, so that you can check it out on the website. We have added weekly summaries along with our daily case counts. That aligns with the state and neighboring communities. And this helps people with decision-making, so we're pleased to be able to offer that. Our reporting periods on those weekly summaries are Wednesday through the following Tuesday, and our reports will be updated on Thursdays. So just go to the city of Manassas Health Department website and look under COVID-19, and you'll find all those data summaries. Comparing the last two-week period, which is the 15th through the 28th, to the previous two-week period, July 8th through the 21st. And this is what's very hard, is that in the last two-week period, we've had 21 new cases, and then the previous one was 19. So we have been going up, not down. Our case rate per 100,000 people, which is what we all look at across the state in our communities and in our counties, is 119.5 right now per 100,000 people. That burden is high according to the state of Wisconsin. The previous two-week period, the one prior to that, we had 19 confirmed new cases, and our case rate was 108.5. That still gives us a really high burden for our population. And if you take a look at how the state looks at this, for us in Manassas to get to a low case count, that would mean less than two cases in a 14-day period. And like I said, we had 21 this most recent 14-day period. So that puts us at a high level. And our case rate, if it's greater than 100 per 100,000 people, remember ours is at 119.5. That means our case rate is high, too. And this is the way it's calculated across the state. So it's data that we actually get now from the state of Wisconsin for our local health department jurisdiction. We're still collecting daily measures, and I'd like to share that really quickly with you. Remember, we talked about the number of positive tests as a percentage of the total tests, and we want to get below five. So that's just barely in the green, so that's good. But again, that incidence, that threshold of cases in a 14-day period is in the red. It's too high. So we're going to push that down. We are in the green with testing. I know I've been talking about testing so that we can find out who's positive, get them isolated, get their close contacts quarantined. To do that and be in the green, we need to be at at least 28 tests per day. As of the 30th of July, we were at 13.14. And we've been able to contact people when we get the results of the tests, if they're positive, within 24 hours. So there's some okay news. So it helps us to take a deeper dive. Hospital capacity status reports, I checked today, and this is the newest. There is robust testing in place for healthcare workers. They can treat all patients without crisis care currently. So we're in the green there. And however, we still have infected healthcare workers, which is of concern, and that's in the red. So that's where we're at. All of this is posted on our Health Department Coronavirus Disease or COVID-19 website. And the new measures, the new weekly measures are in the mix. A couple new things. You're all aware that the governor has issued executive orders requiring face covering statewide. We're working through those orders. We're trying very hard to take an educational approach. And people here are in great compliance as they come back to work. And we've been, over the weekend, and we've been offering people face coverings if they don't have them, and they come to do business here. So we haven't had any disruptions at all, so we hope it continues. And then, this is really great news. We have, this sounds funny, the Wing Testing Site. It's the Wisconsin Army National Guard. We worked with Winnebago, Calumet, Outagamy, City of Appleton Health Departments to bring in the Wisconsin Army National Guard to provide COVID-19 testing. And I am really proud to say that UW Oshkosh Fox Cities has been so easy to work with. And that campus will be a testing site this Wednesday. This is a quick turnaround for us. We were just notified. We're very, very happy about this. There is a lot of information on our website. But just to give you and the public a little additional information, this is a critical component to controlling COVID-19 because that early testing helps us to identify cases and prevent the spread. The testing is available to any Wisconsin resident with symptoms. And it's available this Wednesday, August 5th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And people should enter the UW Oshkosh Fox Cities campus from University Drive. And then, on Friday and Saturday, there will be testing at the Sunny View Expo Center down near Oshkosh. And people can enter the Sunny View Expo Center from the Garden View Lane. They'll be open from 9:00 to 5:00 on those days. There'll be about 500 tests available. So people need to pre-register. There's an app that you can use. They will also take, in addition to drive-ups, they'll take walk-ins. So if people haven't pre-registered, they will assist them with doing so as they get to the site. The testing site is only available to people five and older. And if someone has a child under five years old that has symptoms or they need to check with their pediatrician or their family physician. Again, I'd really encourage anybody that's experiencing symptoms to get tested. And that can include fever, cough, difficulty breathing, sore throat, runny nose, nausea, vomiting, diarrhea, headache, chills, muscle aches, or a loss of taste or smell. A doctor's referral isn't required. There's no appointment needed. And there's a language translation service that we're using. The minors have to be accompanied by parents and consent to testing. The tests should be received within three to seven business days. And the daily capacity, again, is 500. All of these details and how to sign up are on our website. This is the press release that went out today. So we worked collaboratively with all these entities, including Sunny View and including UW Oshkosh Fox Cities. Again, I can't say enough for the collaboration that's taking place. And I want everybody to be safe.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. As Nancy stated, if anyone has further questions than that, please contact her office or go to the website. We're going to jump now to the authorization to use the CARE Act funding to purchase IT equipment. And I almost want to say that's why I did it this way, but it's not. But for about a month and a half now, the mayor and I have been talking about the possibility of us doing this, getting staff and ourselves. We're one of the few communities that do not use electronic equipment. It'd be easier for the clerk's office, be easier for us. And then if we do need to quarantine ourselves, we all have the same piece of equipment so that we don't have technical issues down the line. So I'll entertain a motion at this point from anyone that would like to move for us to authorize the use of the CARE Act funding. Alderman, who went first? Who's blinking? Okay, Alderman Repella.
Oh, thank you very much. I'll make a motion to accept the authorization to use the CARE Act funding to purchase the IT equipment.
Is there a second? Second by Alderman Tom Grotty. Alderman Taylor, oh, you don't have anything. Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. I'm not sure, since the memo came from the mayor, I'm not sure who to direct questions to.
Yeah, I think Nancy, because she's involved with the CARES Act, so...
Okay.
I can try.
Sure.
Okay. The memo indicates that equipment would be purchased for three department heads, well, four, I guess. And so I'm curious what system was used to come up with that request? Because we have more employees that would need to work from home than just department heads.
I'll defer to Attorney Captain.
Okay. Attorney Captain, go ahead.
The other department heads already have equipment, laptops. And so those other department heads would not need to acquire new equipment.
And those are city-issued laptops?
Yes.
Okay. And what about the mayor?
He also has a laptop already.
A city-issued laptop?
Correct.
Okay. That answers that question. What about other employees who would be able to work from home?
There are just a few laptops that are available. But this is not for the purpose of having all employees have the ability to work from home. It's just those that would be considered providing essential services and would actually need to hook up outside of the city in the event of some type of emergency.
Okay. And it also indicates that this would include the purchase of laptops and other associated software. So is the cost of the software incorporated into these numbers?
No, I believe that what is provided there are just for the purchasing of the equipment. So the software would be additional.
Jennifer, did you want to address something?
That is correct. The numbers that the mayor has are just for the actual devices.
So where would we come up with the money for the associated software, then?
I do know that IT has a cost, a license cost at this point of about $650 a year. And I believe that would be for the laptops for the aldermen.
And that can be installed by IT because we have the license?
Correct.
Do we have an allotted amount to the city from CARES Act funding? Or is this something that we would apply for through our COVID-19 expenses?
We already do have, oh, sorry.
No, it's okay.
Either or.
The city of Manassas has been allotted 284,670.
Anything further, Alderman Nichols?
Not at this time, thank you.
All righty, thank you. Anne?
Thank you. I just had just the question, but I'm sure it probably will come up as far as going into budget times. But if you're going to be adding additional, and I know you said that IT has the, you know, ability to do so many machines, have so much money. I do know enough about IT that things constantly change. This is probably going to be something that'll have to be added into the budget going forward because if you're going to be adding this many more pieces of equipment. So just, I wanted to throw that out there, that there's always going to be continual additional costs. But yeah, it was my understanding that there's no way this included any software, so. Thank you.
This would be new for the council. We're kind of behind the times on this. So thank you. Appreciate your comments, Alderman Schmidt.
Thank you.
Anything further? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. That was one of my comments that I jotted down. And would it be appropriate to incorporate into the motion that these items be added to our inventory and placed on the replacement schedule?
I would personally say no. That we would be addressing most of that in our following budget. This will get us through this year. And then whatever we learn from IT that we need to update with, that will be added into the council budget.
Well, the replacement schedule would help everybody, would help staff prompt that conversation in a few years for replacement. So it's not about talking about it in 20, for the 2021 budget, but looking out three or five years for when that has to be replaced.
And I'm sure that, I mean, if this doesn't pass, then of course, that's not going to happen. If it passes, those are the steps that the administration will be taking. Not only that, but the biggest part of this, I think, would be within the clerk's office. And all those that help her putting all this together is, from what I understand, can be a real nightmare sometimes. And I know that Nina's, I'm on the Nina Manash Fire Rescue along with Randy and Ted, and they come in with their tablets, and they've got everything there. And we come in with our papers, you know. And I like paper. You know, I'm old-fashioned, but we got to move forward, folks. So with that, any further questions? Not, we can take a roll call? Thank you.
Motion carries eight zero.
All righty. So we did oh eight twenty. Now we'll move to item two, R twenty-nine twenty, the resolution approving the 2020 capital improvements program, the CIP budget adjustment. Is there a motion? Alderman Ted Grady.
Thank you, Alderman. I'll make the motion for R twenty-nine twenty, a resolution approving a 2020 capital improvement program, the CIP budget adjustments, for the purpose of providing an increase in the funding of the Stormwater Utility Fund to construct a regional stormwater detention in 2020, introduced by Mayor Merkis.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderman Langdon. Any further comments? Alderman Nichols.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to Director Sassman for including the A Stormwater Utility Fund report in the communications this evening.
Okay, thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, we'll take a roll call?
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. There are no appointments, no claims. We will, before we recess, I would jump to oh, for public comments on any matter, and then we can recess into committees. So is there anyone from the gallery at this time that would like to speak on any of the matters that was listed on our agenda this evening? We have like thirty people out there and no one wants to. Well, thank you for attending this evening. We appreciate it. With that? Okay. With that, we'll recess into committees. I entertain a motion to recess.
I'll make the motion to recess.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those, any, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? We are now recessed. Thank you.